Planning board meeting for July eighteenth, twenty twenty four. We'll start with.
I'm Pamela Berman.
Good evening, Jeremy Baldwin.
Kimberly O'Brien.
Steve O'Neil.
Dave Robson.
Michael Page.
Brad Mustang, TEC.
All right, to start, A and R for thirty-one Ting Road, create new parcel A not buildable lot under the current Ting's Borough zoning bylaws.
Hello.
Hello.
For the record, Doug Lee's from Land Engineering and Environmental Services, here representing, what am I representing? Mr. Eady on his proposal to subdivide the property at, oh, not subdivide, but to divide the property at thirty-one Ting Road. It's an existing house on, it actually sits on ten, ten lots on an old subdivision plan. What he wants to do is cut off four of the lots to make parcel A that he's gonna hold on to and then sell the house on lot, what will be lot one, the existing house on thirty-one Ting Road. He's just finished renovating the house. I went online today and looked at the pictures on Realtor dot com or one of those pages at the inside and it really, really looks nice. It's really a beautiful house on the inside now. But he just wants to hold on to parcel A for, I'm not sure. The house has been tied into sewer and water off of First Street, so the utilities are coming in off of First Street. I know that was one of the comments that he had. Went to make sure that we weren't cutting off the part, part of the property that had the system on it or other well. There is a well on the property, but it's been tied into municipal water. This is part of the improvements he's made on the property. So parcel A will become a non-buildable lot that he'll be able to own and pay taxes on and, you know, come and visit once in a while.
Uh, Jeremy? No comments this time? Yeah?
Uh, I'm good. No questions?
Dave? Right?
Anything?
Nope.
Under our zoning, we can allow for a non-buildable lot.
Mm-hmm. That it's usually required the notation on the lot that we have in the plan that it's not a buildable lot under current zoning. Someday if the zoning changes, that may change, but.
Do you know what he means by the A and R generally meets the town of Ting's Borough bylaws?
I'm sorry?
On, on our letter from you, the tech and our plan review comments. It's on number five, with the exception of the above comments, proposed A and R generally meets the town of Ting's Borough zoning.
That's just the words we used on towns. It meets it. Generally meets it as well. They meet with the town bylaws. For hedging.
Any other comments? Okay, Dave? Um, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R plan for thirty-one Ting Road dated June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, um, any opposed? Hearing none opposed or? Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just leave it. I'll take care. Yeah. Just pop it in here. I'll take care of it.
All right, baby ones just trash, throw it away. Thanks.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Okay, second. On the agenda, the four-party shopping plaza, four-party Middlesex Road requests for an adjustment to the building footprint to accommodate a new tenant. Produce yourself.
Sure. Uh, Tim Power with PVI Site Design, a civil engineering firm and acting as the owner's rep for the TCI Development, the owners of the property, who's developing, redeveloping the plaza. Uh, we are here because of a small, what we think is minor change to the plan. Uh, we had a tenant that this owner has and another plaza actually approached us, or approached the owner, to come to this center. Uh, it's a rock climbing facility that does like national level championship competitions, so more than just your neighborhood rock climbing stuff for kids. Uh, very professional establishment, but they needed a little more width on the building and obviously more height as well. Uh, they have a forty-foot high bay, call it high bay area, where they have, you know, tall walls and then another section that has smaller bouldering that's about fifteen feet high, so. Uh, but they needed a little more width, so our, our building needed to push out a little bit on one side. Uh, we tried to keep it as tight as we could with the program they needed and staying within our, what our permit limits were, so, but it resulted in a, a minor increase. Uh, it's only about one percent of the total of the shopping center, uh, fifteen hundred and forty-nine square feet more. Um, as we know in our letter, they're not a very intense use day to day. Um, you know, certainly there's some weekend and you can walk in and, and do rock climbing. Uh, but it's not a, a heavy use, so I don't think that small increase in square footage is reflected in, in use around the site for parking and whatnot. Uh, and that's it. We provided a, a sort of updated site plan with, in just black and white with dimensions and setbacks and then also overlay plans. You can see the difference in what was previously approved on footprint, as you can see on the screen, and what's proposed. In this one, the green is what's currently approved today, uh, and the black is what we're looking to do. Uh, the change occurs over what would have been pavement and loading area for the building, so there's really no change in impervious cover, uh, just swapping out a little extra building for what was paved in the past.
Okay, Jeremy?
So I guess just the, to go through the, the quick changes to the buildings, is building E that you're adding on to?
Yes, just building E is the only change. Everything else remains as previously presented.
So is that where that tenant is going in the, into the, on this plan to the right?
Yep, on the right side. There's a little addition on to the back and a little bit.
That's great. Um, I'm, I'm in favor.
Yeah, great, good use.
Great thing.
Yep, thanks.
I'm good with it.
Yeah, if you're trading ground in pervy, pervious for roof, which is better for water quality, and they already have the parking covered, they just want to put it in some.
All right, um, do we need a vote for a non-substitute change first?
Yep, I put the proposed motions in your packets. Okay, I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Motion that the proposed building footprint location changes are an insubstantial modification. Motion to approve the building footprint location change noted in page C one hundred of the overall site plan dated June thirteenth, twenty nineteen and revised June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in with the change. We appreciate it.
Coming in.
You're all welcome. Come see it as it's going in. It's great. A little fun facility.
Glad you're even in the audience.
Very cool.
Thanks for coming in.
Public hearing number three, one-thirty Middlesex Road, applicant has requested a continuance to August first, twenty twenty-four meeting. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to continue this till the June sixth. Wait, what's the next meeting?
Uh, August first.
August first. August first, twenty twenty-four.
At the applicant's request.
At the applicant's request.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Okay, we have forty-two Jaco Drive, map sixteen, parcel fifty-five zero. Allison and Walter Kelly, applicants for a special permit under section nine point three, temporary independent living quarters of the Ting's Borough zoning bylaws. As well as any, as well as any other permit relief as may be required for the construction of a one thousand, one square foot addition to be used as a temporary living quarter. Advertised in the low sun, July third and eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion for the, uh?
He can motion to open the public hearing and waive the reading of the.
Butters list.
Butters list.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay.
Hi, I'm Chris Crump with CWC Design in Newburyport, representing my clients, Walter and Allison Kelly, at forty-two Jaco Drive. We are looking to add on a temporary independent living quarters for the, for Allison's father, Sam. We, it's a one thousand and one square foot addition on the right side of the structure. Of the existing structure is a single-family home complying to all zoning bylaws in regards to the existing structure. The proposed addition does require variance relief, which we just got approved last week from the ZBA. So this is our last step to hopefully get this approved this evening. And as far as I am aware, it does meet all the requirements set forth in the bylaws of Ting's Borough. We do have letters of support from both, from neighbors on both sides, um, one acknowledging that they're, they're fine with the addition, the other one also acknowledging that they are aware that the uh, secondary driveway will be going up alongside the property line and they're fine with it. And we also have a letter from, uh, I believe, the town consultant, um, stating that he feels that it meets all the regulations and requirements, uh, required in the zoning bylaws. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Jeremy?
Thanks for coming in. Um, I guess my first question is, was the ZBA variance that was?
The ZBA variant, so we needed a five-foot variance. It's a, it's a thirty-foot, a thirty-foot setback on the right-hand side of the property. And due to ledge as well as creating more of a shotgun addition, that probably wouldn't look so appealing to this, to the house. We need a five-feet relief from the side setback in order to make it work and fit.
This is just a question for the rest of the board. Is there anything that we need to grant a variance on for proximity of the driveway to another driveway or to a lot line for that new? I didn't know if we have any. For some reason, I thought we had something in our bylaws on that.
So it's gonna have two driveways now?
Yes.
We're just doing the temporary living quarters, so that'd be up to zoning.
So those are asking for really? Those are my only questions. Otherwise, I'm generally in favor of this.
No, I think you've covered it all in the submission. Thank you.
Oh, I have no problems with it.
I was just. One thing we noticed was the setback, the game is very important.
Okay. Any motions from the board?
It's a public hearing.
Yep, public hearing, sorry. Anybody in the public wishing to speak? Hearing none? Can I have a motion? Close the public hearing?
Well, just, do we want to address the letter from TEC that asks for an update on the plans?
It was just the setback information.
Just the setback. I thought he said there was some trust at ZBA.
So we're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
It's a procedural thing. The setback lines should be shown on those plans, but he got a variance to meet them, so.
Okay.
If you want to require him to come back with a new plan with setback lines.
That sounds expensive.
Does.
Inside consumed.
Yeah.
I'm sure he's looking forward to having his in-laws move around.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Another motion?
Just want, have one question before.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure we don't, um, we got, we have the setback, the variance correct. Anything with the steps because of those, it's, it's really the structure, the foundation that the setback has to be granted for?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for temporary independent living quarters for forty-two Jaco Drive, per special permit revised through April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and the design plan set dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. With the following conditions, uh, it, uh, the proposal is in harmony with the purpose, well, there are no conditions actually, so skip that. But the, uh, the purpose, proposed use is in harmony with the purpose intent of the bylaw, will not be detrimental or harmful to the neighborhood in which it is to take place, is appropriate for the site in question, and complies with all applicable requirements of this bylaw.
Uh, a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
My dad. Yeah, good luck.
Enjoy them. Uh, next, five hundred Potash Hill Road, DVA Mass Crane. Crane Realty Trust applicant for a modification to an existing special permit for the construction of a eleven thousand, five hundred square foot addition to an existing forty thousand, two hundred and fifty square foot building in a I-one district advertised in the low sun, July third and eleventh. Have a motion to, uh, open a public hearing, waive the reading.
So moved?
All those in, uh, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right.
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Casey Ferreira. I'm with Howard Stein Hudson Associates. Um, I'm joined tonight by John Karp, who is the G C slash project manager for the overarching addition. And also, uh, Mr. Frost, who runs the business there. It's anyway, we're, we're here for a building addition at five hundred Potash Road, as we mentioned. Uh, that is where Mass Crane and Hoist, uh, does their business. There was a special permit granted in twenty sixteen for the construction of this building. Uh, that special permit was required due to the, the size of the building. Um, as you mentioned, the size of building existing is forty thousand, two hundred and fifty, um, square feet with approximately nine thousand square foot of office. So total gross, uh, square footage of about forty-nine, two fifty, uh, existing. The, it is, uh, within the I-one, or yeah, I-one light industrial zoning district. Um, and the, the existing building was constructed through twenty eighteen and opened for business in early twenty nineteen. Per the parking regulations, the existing facility requires forty-five spaces for the office, fifteen for the warehousing area, and that's based on employees. Um, and additionally, three for operational vehicles and then four parking spaces, parking spaces for visitors. That totals sixty-seven parking spaces required. As part of the original build-out, what, um, they have fifty-three parking spaces constructed with fourteen land banked, um, so they do have the sixty-seven. Um, and there's plenty of space and open pavement for additional, uh, if they ever required it, um, but currently what they have parked out there is more than enough for the business operation. Um, the existing development as it stands totals about a hundred and eighty-three thousand, hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-four square foot of impervious. Um, our proposal actually reduces that, uh, with the addition because basically the addition is going over existing, um, impervious. It's where the, the truck maneuvering area is out front, uh, and then we're gonna add landscaped areas along the side where drive aisles are kind of more to be defined now in a more efficient manner. All this existing impervious drains through catch basins and pipes to a sediment for bay and an existing drainage, uh, facility, a drainage basin uh, that runs right alongside the common driveway that's shared between this lease parcel, which is Mass Crane, and then also Ting's Borough Sports Center, which is further down, uh, if you're following from Potash Hill Road. Um, so for the proposal, the, the addition is eleven thousand, five hundred square feet. Uh, this addition is mainly required just to give them some additional space and workspace within their warehouse. It didn't come up as a need for, for higher volume or more output from the facility. Uh, it's really to make them comfortable in the space that they have, uh, with the amount of business that they're doing now. Um, there is no intention for additional employees with this addition. Um, they are maintaining the employee base they have now. Like I said, they just need the space, uh, for more warehousing, more storage, um, to basically make this operation run more efficiently and, and safer. As I mentioned earlier, the addition will be on top of the wide swath. I'm sure you guys have been out to the site at some point, or at Potash is a wide swath of pavement right up front of the building. So the, the addition's gonna be placed right on top of that swath of pavement. Uh, we ran a WB sixty-seven trailer and a WB forty trailer. The WB sixty-seven is your typical full-size tractor trailer with the fifty-three foot trailer. Um, and that can make the new maneuver fine with the addition right in front of the building closer to Potash. Um, and then the WB forty, which is a smaller-sized trailer with a forty-foot total length. That'll be isolated to the loading dock that we're proposing on the right-hand side or the southern side of the, the new face of the building. The, there is, if you look on the northern face of the existing building, there is a canopy top that is currently, uh, constructed, has a concrete base underneath it and canopy. They use it for their mechanicals and other kinds of, uh, storage of, of stuff that they have. Um, just beyond that, behind it on the existing building, uh, we want to construct another one of those. Um, so we're replacing an, an existing landscape island with a concrete pad and another canopy top over. And what that's gonna be used for is they have some small trailers that are about twenty feet in length. Uh, they just wanna park those trailers, um, with weather cover to some extent on top of that concrete pad. And then basically I'll just have the canopy cover over top. We're also gonna install a couple of bollards, um, from those parking spaces to ensure that the building doesn't get damaged by any trailers. Um, the overall reduction in impervious to the site after the, with the proposal that you see up on the screen, uh, is about five hundred and eighty-two square feet. And this is achieved by where we lose any landscaping, we make up for that, uh, amount, uh, with a large landscaped area on the southern side of the building, which you kind of see as that brown bark mulched area, um, below. What we attempted to do with that landscape is more define a drive aisle along that side entrance. Currently that exists as part of that giant truck maneuvering, so when we drop the addition there, the, the pavement that's on the side doesn't need to be as wide anymore. There's no reason for it. So as trucks sweep in, um, we just defined a, a drive aisle for them to take, and in doing that, we created a significant landscape area. Beneath the existing addition is where the, um, more difficult part of this addition actually lies, and that's in the drainage that's below. So this entire site, or at least this area of the southern, southeastern, or southwestern portion of the site is tons of ledge. Um, so really what we're trying to do is use the existing carve-outs that they've already done and installed, um, to redirect this drainage. So the, what made the most sense for this site in redirecting this drainage was actually to reuse and utilize the existing drainage runs that they already carved out. Um, and that lies under the building. So some of the existing drainage directed that is to remain is going to be, um, rerouted to a manhole that's on the northern side of the, the addition with a one pipe connecting from the north side of the addition to the south side of the addition. That pipe is going to be, and this came up in the, um, the peer review that we did receive, um, but that pipe is now gonna be upsized, um, just to make sure that there's enough capacity within that pipe to handle everything. Um, it's gonna be upsized to an eighteen inch below the building, and then there's a manhole right after the building where we tie in another catch basin. From there, it's gonna be upsized to a twenty-four inch. Um, so basically the, even though we're reducing the, um, impervious, we're gonna upsize the pipes just to make sure that there's adequate capacity, and there should be no problems in the future. Uh, I will mention at the very beginning of this project, um, the G C, John Karp, did speak to a structural engineer to discuss that pipe going underneath the building because that was one of the glaring items that we, we identified from the start. And his recommendation was essentially that what we can do when, when designing the interior of the building, we can intentionally locate columns so that their area of influence won't impact that pipe. So the pipe will essentially just be under an impervious cover like it typically would be without any bearing capacity, um, presented from the structural integrity of the building. The landscaping that I mentioned was designed by a professional landscape architect. Um, so there is bushes, a couple of trees and some ground cover that's being proposed in there that'll match kind of the existing landscaping that's around the building to try and create a uniform look so that it doesn't look like, okay, we have this existing building, we add an addition, and this is brand new. It should just flow like a uniform look across the entire building. As I mentioned, we did receive peer review comments. We can go through those if you would like. One thing I will mention is the, the grading and drainage plan that they received. We had since updated in talking to the old contractor, the contractor that constructed it in the first place, uh, where he laid out where the ledge was and all kinds of subsurface information for us. So we had already revised some stuff just based on constructability, um, so that is gonna be the plan that we reproduced to them. Um, and it takes care of their comments of, uh, pipe sizing, routing, and issues like that. And then we also did add a photometric plan as requested by the, uh, the peer review. And I believe that covers my introduction to the project.
Multiple. Right? All right, Jamie?
Thanks. Um, yeah, I, I just wanna say that businesses like this, Mass Crane, uh, they've been a great neighbor to the community. They, I, I think these are the ones that we wanna, uh, work with to, to make them, um, to make it, these communities, uh, make them stay in our community. Now, um, before I get into my comments, I was just curious if we could just have TEC just give a brief, uh, introduction on some of their comments, if we could.
You wanna address, hey, you wanna address some of the comments now?
Yeah, I was gonna go through them, kind of in my comments, so I think it'd be helpful if, um.
All right, you wanna go through the, uh, comments?
They seem rather short. There's not a lot.
Uh, number one is just there was inconsistency between the zoning table and the plans and what was in supplemental data report recorded in the comments. I imagine that was pretty easy. Um, the second one is this, the western island here, which is the one right down here.
At the entry.
It looks like it'd be pretty hard to maneuver into that, that, with the existing island right there, so we wanted to make sure we're not doing any alterations to that island, and how we can turn into there.
So in this revised packet that you guys have in front of you, which you will receive?
Just, you know, this isn't gonna get wrapped up tonight, so let, we're not, let him address, uh, Jeremy's comments so we can get through them, and then there's probably some people in the audience that wanna speak. You guys can address that later.
Okay, so just some access issues with that entrance. We're wondering how it's gonna work.
Yep.
Let's see, the parking requirement, like square footage of the existing building and the new addition, are expecting to see some more math on it. Make sure we're, uh, had enough parking for the overall site. I believe I saw some on the cover there, so we'll look into that. Uh, the fifteen-inch pipe going underneath the building, that's always a concern. I see a pipe going underneath the building. I understand it's good you're making provisions. Obviously, it's not a hard no, but it's something you wanna bring up. It's less than ideal. Um, I'd still say the fact that it's PVC is even more or less than ideal, but.
Yeah, that was, that was one of my big questions was, like, can you just explain the pipe a little bit further, what that really entails?
Do you wanna finish through here? Do you want me to?
I, I think we can take it off.
We'll, we'll take care of it and we'll, like, you know, go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah, I, I think we can take this one. It's, I just wanted to understand where it was being run and, uh, what, you mentioned you're dealing with it structurally, so what are you dropping? The footings lower so you can penetrate, and it doesn't have to be load-bearing on this element?
No, no, so, so this is gonna be a complete slab upgrade, so the footings are gonna be around the, the external of the building, so what we'll run into is just one entry point and one exit point. That conflicts with the footings, which we will take care of with, similar to how you do like a roof drain, you'll just punch it through the, the frost wall. Um, you can even sleeve it with a larger so that, you know, has more, like, you can have like, um, corrugated metal pipe so that there's some strength to the, the overarching sleeve. But the, the structural stability of the building comes from the columns that are internal, so the structural engineer is gonna design them or has been designing them so that they won't be, uh, within the zone of influence of the, the columns.
All right.
And the, the pipe material was actually, we had some back and forth on this. The reason I chose the PVC was because that's typically, um, what you'll see in like a typical plumbing when that, that's already going under a building. Um, I'm not hard and fast on the material as it is. Um, I'm not hardened fast on the material as it is. We could use, uh, schedule forty, we could use schedule eighty, we could go back to an H G P E if that's recommended. But, um, we're just using what would typically be under the building.
I just wanted, there's no structural load over this part.
Hang on, sir. Um, we're gonna ask the questions and then if Jeremy has some, play, you can tell us who you are.
I was just gonna help answer that question. That's all. Sorry.
Who are you?
Uh, sorry, my name, I thought I introduced. My name's John Karp. I'm the construction manager for the project. I also manage the original building construction as well.
Okay.
Jeremy, go ahead.
I guess we, we can kinda move on from, from that item. Um, I was just, uh, curious about the accessibility, uh, comment. If, are you taking out any, uh, accessibility parking spaces or, or maneuvering them in all way?
Nope.
Okay. Overall, I think this is great. This is positive. We, um, it makes a lot of sense. I know there was been, there's been overflow parking that goes over here from the Tinsborough Sports Center. But now that everything's getting constructed for the new parking lot, I don't think there's really much of an issue. And it, it deters, um, people from the Tinsborough Sports Center to go into here now. I think it was easy when it was, you know, that big wide open area that we had before. And, um, I'm just curious if, is there any signage, any additional signage that's being proposed or anything?
So as, as part of the project, the only signage that we're adding is because of the, the maneuvering path, we have to have a one-way for the tractor trailer. So there, there'll be, and it's gonna be from the, the southern portion around the building and back up to the front, which is the maneuvering area. So there'll be signage just to direct, uh, trailer drivers, uh, tractor drivers and make sure that they're going the correct direction so that they can make their sweeps.
That's it for me?
If I'm looking at the Plan C seven, the, uh, lighting plan, it looks like the lighting is kept on the site. Is that what I'm seeing? Okay.
Yep, so the lighting is kept, uh, so all we're doing is we're gonna move the exist, some of the existing lighting that's on the existing building to the front. But yes, um, we had the, the lighting manufacturer prepared this, just use the existing, um, lights that were provided by John. And he shows that they are all kept within the limits of the, the property.
And the, the new landscaping that you have up front, you say that's just gonna be mulch or will there be something?
No, no, no. So we showed it on that as mulch, but there is, we did have a registered landscape architect design, trees, shrubs and, um, ground cover to go with in that landscaped area.
Thanks. We do not. Do we have the landscape plan?
Yep, that was submitted with the original plan. On this plan, it is C six.
Okay. Great. I'm all set. Dave?
I'm, I'm good, Jeremy. Riddled off the ones that I would've been going after, so I'm not gonna waste any more time with it. But it looks like kind of a minimal addition change to it, so.
I have no further questions.
What's that?
I have no questions about it.
Okay, um, we'll get some, anybody in the audience, uh, wanna speak on this, behalf of this project? Against any comments, please step up to the microphone. Please, uh, give your name and your address.
I'm Murphy, forty-five Steinbeck Street. I just have a couple of questions. I couldn't quite hear what, uh, the gentleman said about the lighting. Where is the lighting gonna be on this new building?
I believe he said on the front, but he can, go ahead.
So there'll be one wall pack that is on the three sides of the addition? Uh, they're gonna be the existing, the same type of, uh, lighting that's on the building now?
Which is very bright.
Right, so the photometrics show that the...
What was that?
It, it's very bright, the lights that are there now.
So the photometrics, uh, using that, that specific, um, light model show that the lighting will be kept within the, the property lines of, of the facility and the overall area.
Okay, and...
Any, anything else?
Yeah, one more question.
Yeah.
You said something about the building was gonna be on the impervious. Uh, that's the, the black top that's right there, so there'll be no blasting or anything like that to construct this?
As, there may have to be some as part of the installation of the foundation, depending on what they run into when they dig out the, the footings and the, the knee walls that are going around the, the addition. But the intention of the entire design here is to limit that to the most, you know, the most practical extent.
That's my biggest concern, cause...
Okay, you know that if they do blast, there's a whole procedure they have to go through and check the house. Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else wanna speak? Please give your name and your, uh, address.
Hi, Joe Fraterelli. I'm a resident homeowner on Steinbeck Street in Maple Ridge for about ten years now. Shortly after I moved in, the existing Crane building was proposed and I did not oppose it. As a resident, I understand that sound commercial development helps the city, helps the tax base, and I get that. At the time though, people were complaining that it would, they would wanna expand and it would eventually interfere with the complex. Went on Google, Google Maps today and you can see those trees now have been clear cut right down to the property line of the people on Steinbeck Street. And I just hope the planning board would take that into consideration that this entire expansion, expansion of the property is detrimental to the neighborhood and to property values and to people's quiet enjoyment, the lighting and the noise and the sound. So I'd hope the planning board would take that into consideration in making their determination to hopefully not grant whatever, uh, approvals are required.
Because of the trees, is the views? Okay.
You, you're talking about trees that are on the sports center property?
Correct.
The trees that would be?
Nope, nope. Speak from the, uh, they can't get your own videos, so...
Cause he didn't cut down any trees for this.
Well...
If you, if you look at the site plan that was up there on the bottom edge of that, and you'll see in that photo, that those trees have been clear cut. It's just a naked view straight, uh, to the residents.
So you're looking for a buffer or something, or you just...
Well, I'm concerned that that buffer has been taken down.
Okay.
And so...
Okay.
If this gets approved, that some provision be made, uh, plant some trees or put a fence or a sound barrier or something of, of that nature to protect the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else in the audience, please state your name?
Bruce, Birchfield, seventeen Dickens Lane, just out on the street from this. Um, just to clarify with the lighting and the tree issue, where the trees are the parking lot that's going in, all those trees are, are gone. So now we have pure line of sight.
So that's a different...
It's just the other...
Right, but it's not this project, correct? You're talking about trees that were taken down on a previous project, somebody else's property?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just wanna be clear.
Yep. Um, but the problem is this building is now coming closer to Potash, coming closer to the same development, uh, the parking lot area that has now been strip cut. Now, you're talking about the lighting staying on the property and that's all good and well. The problem is that building is significantly higher than our development. And keeping the lighting on the property is fine, but it still floods down our, in our direction. I don't know if there's any way you can cut that lighting off sooner to keep it within the parking lot, but not go across Potash. Because that's the problem we're having. Now that all these trees are coming down, it's, it's very visible. All the lighting on that building at our angle of incidence, it's very clear.
Okay.
It's not like they're cut off at all.
Anything else?
That's all, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Any concerns, comments? Okay, um, for myself, I think it's a good project for the town. I hear the neighbors' concerns. You know, there's some work to do between the engineers. Maybe you can relook at the lights. I know it's not your issue with the clear cut if it was cut on somebody else's property. But I don't know if there's anything in the landscaping plans that might help them if you'd consider them. But I think there's still work to be done and maybe on the lighting, you can address it. The engineer can, uh, make sure. I don't know. Any other comments from the board at this point?
Uh, I'd like to just let the neighbors know that, I mean, we worked pretty hard on that other, uh, site for the sports center and providing some good buffers. Uh, I'm glad we did because yes, it is clear cut. But as you proceed up Potash and go around, you're gonna have three layers of vegetation that's gonna be planted. You have some at that top of the hill. I don't know how much it, it additionally helps on, uh, it, it, it might help, uh, maybe at that corner uh, where you're putting that additional spot in. But you, you are gonna have the first layer of defense with some of the plantings at the top of the hill. The second layer of defense where it is over at the, um, the Potash memorial type thing. And then you also have additional planting that's happening, um, in the backside of those neighbors' property. So you do have three layers that we've asked for. And I get it. I know that you guys are dealing with the clear cutting back to your lot, but there's gonna be more buffer eventually, um, once that's complete.
No other comments?
Any other comments from the board or?
I have a question regarding the lighting. Is it on twenty-four seven? Is the lighting on twenty-four seven?
So we have just... If you don't, if you don't mind going to the mic, thank you. Just state your name, please, your address.
George Ross, Mass Crane. Um, so we have two types of lights. We have pole lights around the circumference of our property. Those are only on from, I don't know, five or six or seven to like eight or nine o'clock at night, and then they'll shut off. If those times wanted to be modified, we're happy to do that. The lights, I think that they're, that are bothering them are the wall packs that are on the building. If those are objectionable, I think that there are, there are deflectors on them now. There were supposed to be deflectors to shine down. If we made, if we need to exaggerate that to, you know, put them down further, um, those lights are only on for security. Um, that's the only reason we keep them on through the night, and they are on through the night. And we do that for security. We have had some people come through that, you know, shouldn't be there, so...
Could they be put on a motion detector?
I don't know. I, yeah, well, I'm sure they could. I prefer to just deflect them down.
Deflect them. It seems like their issues are...
We're not gonna, you know, that's what we're gonna have the engineers do. You get a feel for what the board's looking for, what the neighbors are looking for. So I think if the engineers can get together, come up with a solution next meeting, you know, maybe if you need to, you know, you can speak to the neighbors and address any comments that's between you and the neighbors. You don't have to. But, um, I, I think we heard, uh, if, yeah, that'd be good. And we can address the concerns of the neighbors, and I'm sure there's some kind of lighting that the engineers can come up with that won't interfere with them, so...
This reflects the new lighting.
We have that.
All right, so any other, thank you. Any other comments from, go ahead, give your...
So who are the residents' contacts to discuss this with?
After the meeting, you can talk to the engineer and he can speak to you and, um...
Oh, great. Yeah, we'll connect after the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. With that, uh, looking for motion for continuance, how long you guys think you need?
We have a site plan that's ready for submission tomorrow, so if we could be seen at the next meeting, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion to continue to the August first, twenty twenty-four meeting?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll, we're gonna have a meeting, uh, August first for all the neighbors that are concerned. And as you heard, you can reach out to them and hopefully address the issues and maybe work together next time we come back. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Can we let the engineer go?
What's that?
Can we let the engineer go?
Guys, if you could, could you like go outside the building so that you won't disrupt that meeting, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I don't think we need, hang on. I don't think we need them. We don't need you for anything else, I don't think, if you wanna take, take off. Can hang around if you want.
We keep Dave. Don't, don't, don't feel bad about him.
Thank you.
Don't tell him you went a whole five minutes out, but...
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks. Uh, request for comment, select board eighteen Pondview Place, unit twenty-four, Indian cuisine restaurant, alcohol, common particular, uh, weekday and weekend entertainment license. Jeremy?
No comment?
No comment.
We gotta look into the parking for this. This is where the used car lot is, correct? This is what we knew we were gonna run into. They allowed them to have a used car lot in there with twenty-one or twenty-three spaces, I believe? That will no longer be available to them?
When you said allow, there was the select board that allowed that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So concerns for parking?
Yes.
Would be the request. Any other requests? Comments to him? Jeremy? Good thinking.
Uh, I mean, I guess, you know, when, Mr. Robson brought up a good point here. Uh, we, when we had that in front of us from the select board to comment on the used car dealership, uh, we brought up concerns about pedestrian safety and access between the lot. I believe it's only accessed off of Pondview Place. Um, is that, I think that's right. And so, yeah, I think safety and number of spots is, and are concerned. If that lot, if that used car lot wasn't there, I wouldn't have a concern, but cars.
Good, Pam?
Yep.
All right, moving on. Administrative approval of minutes, June sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written for June sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, number eight, new business topics that the chairman did not reasonably would be discussed. Anticipate reasonably that would be discussed. Anything? No? Moving on. Planning board for... I'm sorry.
Says right on the, the planning board representatives for two of the zoning review committee. We need to, um, and for the, um, master plan implementation committee. We need, um, to appoint those, for those committees. You see in your notes, um...
Right, I nominate Chad and Jeremy.
Second for both?
Good.
Second.
Yeah?
Sure.
I didn't hear, my name wasn't there, right? Okay, yeah, approved. Second, third, fourth. You got them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
And I recommend, uh, Kim, Kim for, uh, the planning board representative for the master plan implementation committee.
Second, third, fourth.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
No, thanks. Old business, one forty-seven Cross Road update.
So in your packets, you have some detailed, um, information regarding this site, which you had requested, uh, a few months back. Eric, uh, reached out to them as well as, uh, Emily. Um, it was tough to get responses. We got, um, a response, um, from the engineer, um, and he says that most of the work was done. The stormwater infrastructure improvements, including detention basins, were completed. The wooden guardrails were installed and some of the plantings were installed. Um, if you see on the, the, your, your color chart here, your, uh, site plan, it shows, um, what items, um, the, uh, proposed pavement, what hasn't been done. So the, the pink hasn't been done. Existing pavement obviously is still there. The playground and basketball court were proposed. Those have not been completed either. Some of the, uh, remaining, um, plantings haven't been done. And, um, the, uh, the, the fencing, the chain link, um, fencing. I actually took a ride over there on Monday, um, and there are, um, about ten dumpsters, I'd say, that are stored back there um, with a, a, a truck, um, state line dumpster service. I don't know what they're doing there. I don't know what they're doing there, apparently they might be renting the, the spot or something, but I do have a, an email into the building inspector to inquire whether that's an allowed, allowed use, or, you know, what measures can be done about that, if any. So regarding the, the rest of the work, is the, the engineer had said that the owners ran out of money, and they couldn't finish the rest of the work, and it was around when COVID hit. And so they indicated to the engineer that they wouldn't be able to complete it until they had the money, but if they do decide to complete it, they will come back to the planning board and file a new application for the special permit, and they would also have to go back to conservation, so basically they're starting all over again to finish the work.
Any comments?
Could I go first?
Well, Jeremy and Kim pass, as you.
Yeah, what were you guys to ask? I might save you a breath.
I'd save my time.
Since when it's up, when's it up to the applicant or the person to dictate to us what they're gonna do or not do, or finish or not finish?
It's not up to us to finish, but once these are ruled, then, go ahead.
I, there have been projects in the past where they've run into unforeseen circumstances in the project stalls, and for whatever reason, they, they can't finish, and we can't really compel them to finish, but we can at least ask them to come back and, and reapply, and give us updated plans, and.
Didn't we, didn't we discuss looking into something about having, having a fine thing that our board was able to do for unfinished work? I'll, I'll have to run it by Chaz again, because I think Chaz had some more information on that.
Yeah, I don't recall that question.
It'd be discussed, and I think it was for this particular place too.
Well, I mean, there's also, remember the gun range that was supposed to be going in, that?
That isn't.
Yeah, the, the Cummings Road project, that.
He's not open, functioning, collecting money, doing his parties, having his great times, renting a space potentially?
Yeah, I realize that, but along the same principle, it's one that isn't done.
Can I ask one more question? How, how did they get their occupancy to operate, was this, was there some sort of deal made back then during COVID for them to, like how, how does this happen to us?
So, the, the building already existed, they were already occupying it, what, what they got was an addition.
Correct, but they also had changes to it.
So they got, they, they added that addition, you know, and then they needed to make the parking lot improvements, so they already had occupancy.
All sorts of changes, correct.
They had occupancy, but they also did the drainage already, you said?
Yeah, all the stormwater infrastructure has been laid in the ground, yes.
That would be up to, you know, the building commissioner to say, but we can.
We need to tighten our rules and regulations, though, if, if something, you know how many projects you could have like this in the town of Tinsborough?
Yeah, but we did. You can have several, but the problem is, it's, it's a building that was in existence that came in for a modification, not a modification.
Well, one of my. Yeah.
Correct.
But they got a permit to run that business, so in that permit to run that business, this is what they presented to us.
Well.
So I think this would have to be done.
So I think you're, you're making a good point about use, and whether or not the use that's currently there meets zoning, and whether or not they have the right parking for the use that they're currently doing, is definitely something we can ask.
Yes, yeah.
And if they're subleasing.
Oh, yes, and is that use?
I mean, you said ten containers or something are in there?
Yeah, that doesn't sound right.
Yeah, it was about, it looked like it was about ten, they were kinda stacked, they were the big, the huge ones that go in the back of a truck.
Yeah, that would be up to the building commissioner, also, there's two businesses running out.
So that's why, you know, I.
Yeah, she says she's got that in.
Yeah, to get clarification.
He'll find out, it's up to him, he can shut it down.
Yeah. The other clarification I can, I can also get is from town council regarding compelling applicants to finish their projects that have been permitted. Because there are, there are, there is no expiration date for our permits, as soon as they start shoveling the ground, you know.
Well, we need to change that.
You know, but I don't know, that's what I have to ask town council, is, is that something that we can change?
We, we have to specify.
I think you can put sunsets on a.
Yeah, as, as, I, I would, I would venture to guess it would be a condition that you could put on your special permit?
We issue conditions, and we can have the condition, how many houses before, or you need before occupancy, we wanna see, you know, enough parking and stuff, so that comes in the conditions, that we can control that, other than that, you reach out to town council and see if there's enough.
Yeah, I, I will, I'll reach out to town council.
I think it's only in the conditions.
And get some clarification on that.
Or if they did something they weren't supposed to do.
Cause I mean, if we have all the applicants going, hey, yeah, we'll, we'll finish it when we're ready, what's the sense in that if it's an abort?
Right, and then, and then when they go to sell, they got open paperwork that needs to be taken care of, which who knows what happens? So, I think you hold their feet to the fire with conditions, and whatever the attorney tells us.
Are, are they paying proper taxes right now, like was there any relief in that, everything?
No, there was no, no, no property tax relief, no.
Oh, yeah, we did up the four forty middle of that road, we didn't particularly, but it was given by the town, which was a good thing, because I think that project would have scrapped.
That's a tip, yeah.
Alright.
A motion to adjourn?
Well, one, I got, I just, one last thing, I got, I got an email from Brian Dunn from MBL, he's the, that's the company that's doing the BAPS project, the engineer, they're gonna be starting their site work next week, basically they have to install their erosion controls, so they've reached out to, to Emily to schedule, I think they wanna, let's see, they're scheduled to begin the soil erosion controls this Tuesday, and they're bringing in some small equipment on Monday. And I think that Emily wanted to do some kind of site walk or something, and I wanted to check if anyone on the board would be interested in going out on that site, if there is a site walk.
What project is this again?
The BAPS, fifty Westford Road, the, the temple.
The temple, they're getting ready to.
Oh, they're gonna do that, okay.
They're getting ready to start.
Yeah.
When is this?
Well, they're, they're bringing some equipment out on Monday, and they're gonna be installing erosion controls and things like that for, for the site work.
Do you know what time?
No, I don't have any times yet, they haven't set up any meetings, but I wanted to check with you guys if, if and when a meeting is scheduled, I'll put that out there for you to know when it is, and if you wanna go, you can go.
Thank you.
Okay?
I'd be interested in going.
Okay.
Anything else?
That was it, so, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Aaron Dunn, thank you. Pam, thanks.